Please swing in the front room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Thank you. And welcome to our August. September eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council meeting. Would you call them, please? Councillor Beasley?
Here.
Councillor Bennyfield?
Here.
Councillor Watson?
Here.
Councillor Wreck?
Here.
Councillor King?
Here.
Councillor Sovereign?
Here.
Mayor Shorty?
Here.
All right, thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda today? Is everybody working on some of the most recent ones that I sent out?
I have a question about that.
It's the same advice. It's good to have the advice, it's good on both pages. The other question.
And the main reason it was revised is because Sarah Hurd and Jamie had actually asked timely to be included on this agenda. I even began to pick up the dates. But when I went to putting it together, I completely left off. Plus, we had made a few changes to the harbor ordinance, which was clarification. Can I go over those with you? Because we've... It's a work in progress, I guess. So, and then what was the other thing? I forget. No, I think it was just Sarah's presentation and Sarah and the... Oh, and fixing the voodoo in the county reservation. Oh, thank you.
Um, consider agenda. Does everyone have a chance to review minutes in accounts payable? And Tim did you want to do something on accounts payable?
I did. So you'll see a check in there from me. Part of that is the... I can't find all my receipts. I think I just threw a lot away. So I'm like, whatever I found is what I asked for reimbursement. But the other one is the fourth, there was something that was to... Water or wastewater?
Oh.
Wastewater.
Yeah, that point.
Went out and they used that for their samples.
Oh, yeah.
Distorts. So they had to go get it, but it was right at the cusp of... It was before the last... The payment was made at the last bank they had. So it was right at the point of... Before the credit card outpaid after the eighth meeting. So they needed it because the other one died. So I said, just put it on my card. I was planning with the council why I made this. It just... We only have a limit of seven thousand and depending on what we use, it can often blow through that limit pretty fast. So that's what this was.
Oh, really?
We did get a good deal on the fridge, though. It's a thousand dollar fridge for four hundred.
Wow.
Coastal appliances. I see. It had a little ding.
Had a ding on it.
It had a little ding in the door, but it's like a lunchroom.
We were fine with the ding.
Oh, God. Are there any changes or additions to the considered agenda?
I have a question. A couple of questions, actually. One is on the... These minutes, I was looking at these minutes and I recognized them as something that we had already approved. They were approved as the... Their list here is the July twentieth minutes. But we had approved them as the June twentieth minutes at the seven eleven meeting.
I wonder if I grabbed the wrong ones when we did this. So we can just track those and not fix the order?
Okay, okay.
And I'd like to ask one other question. And it has to do with the accounts payable.
Mm-hmm.
And it was the fuel bill we brought in. About what was it, fourteen thousand dollars worth of fuel? Or ten thousand dollars worth of fuel?
You see, it's all here.
Yeah, okay, fifteen thousand, actually. What's the mark on our fuel?
That's an accounting question you need to have...
Yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Diane because she has a calculation that she uses whenever she gets the invoices. I would have to ask her that. I will find out and get that information.
So we charge, we charge a standard markup down at our pump, right?
We have a calculation that was...
It's a very silly calculation, but it's... Meaning that it's very complicated. It's a pain.
We do have a markup.
But it is, and its calculation has been used for a long time.
Two years.
I would have... How long? I heard it's been used longer than that.
You know what it is?
Two years.
Well, gasoline's around five dollars a gallon, but it's... I think it's ninety cents average above on the... That we pay per gallon. On one fuel and the other one's like sixty cents a gallon.
So when you have questions like that, like that, would you call Kim? Because we don't have answers right off the cuff.
I mean, you have a study. You came up with a formula.
And I will get that for you, Councillor.
Any other discussion on the considered agenda? Is there a motion to accept it as requested or as presented? Minus the hands. Minus minutes. Looked approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the accounts payables presented minutes later. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. I guess you're up, Sarah.
Okay, we give her seven minutes. And then we've got a guest as well. And, hi.
You don't need to sign anything.
Okay, just for...
We know who you are.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I will first introduce myself. I'm Sarah Hurd. I am a health education specialist and the tobacco prevention and education program coordinator with Lincoln County Public Health. So today, I also will introduce to you Jamie Dunphy. And he will be available to assist with questions and talk about the flavor ban update at the state of Oregon level. So when we get to that, I will hand it over to Jamie to assist me. I want to honor your time and go right into some policy updates. The state of Oregon passed a tobacco retail license, or TRL, acronym that I'll probably say, in... That went into effect on January one, twenty twenty-two. Some of you may remember Lincoln County Public Health coming and talking to the council in the summer of two thousand nineteen and then again in two thousand twenty. We were working on our own county-wide TRL. But before we could get at them, the state implemented it and got it into place. One of the components that I'll talk about in a moment is that we were working on including in our TRL was a tobacco density ordinance. Other counties already have those in theirs. For example, Lincoln County had a density clause in with their TRL. The state did not. So as of right now, all tobacco retailers, any business who sells tobacco, nicotine, inhalant delivery systems are required to have a license to sell those products through the Department of Revenue. Oregon Health Authority is responsible for doing the inspections of those businesses, unless the county opted in and said, you know, we want to take higher of our own inspections. Lincoln County didn't do that. So OHA is doing... They're doing the inspections. So as of right now, the most recent report we have is just from the first six months of their inspections. They gave the retailer six months to get educated and get their license and get started. We saw that Lincoln County has a roughly thirty percent failure rate on our minor sales. So selling tobacco products and nicotine products to minors. So we know that this is an important... Ordinance to have a place across the state so that we can really start addressing and restricting those... It's an age-restricted product, so we want to make sure it's not getting into that kind of sparring through our retailers. So in regards to the density ordinance, what we were looking at is restricting the amount of tobacco retailers within a thousand feet of a school, a public school, or within a thousand feet of another tobacco retailer. So here in depot bay, I do want to make a correction for when you guys take a look at the map that I provided on infographic. It says three tobacco retailers in depot bay. We have three licensed last year, but this year only two have opted to be licensed to sell tobacco products. So we have two, one at the north end of town, one at the south end, the gas stations. Now, the gas station of the south end of town is within, clearly across the street, a thousand feet of a child caring center. It's not a public school, but a tobacco density ordinance would protect from having yet another tobacco retailer within a thousand feet of that one, which would put the restriction away from the youth as well. I'm going to keep looking at the session to put a clock in front of it. So there's lots of reasons. It's an evidence-based policy of really looking at how we can layer policies and create those environments for risk... To reduce youth access to tobacco products, reduce initiation of smoking or chewing or inhaling or vaping or all the things that people are doing with nicotine with our youth. But it also... Density ordinances also support people who have already quit smoking tobacco or have already quit nicotine products and reducing the amount of advertising and access and seeing it in the retailers or in the stores. So it is something that we were really hoping to do locally with our KRL and then we're hoping to get an ordinance, Public Health is promoting the ordinance across the county and cities. Before I go on to the next update, I just want to pause there and see if anybody has any questions or concerns or... Let's give him, loves the idea.
Um, what about our mayor's one source? Are they inspected as well or how does that play into that?
Yeah, they have a whole nother set of governing rules and laws separate from the tobacco with the nicotine sales.
Okay.
However, the inhalant delivery system, if it's not in a cannabis retailer and there's just a shop that's selling the inhalant delivery systems, they are required under the nicotine law to have a license to sell those products.
Good question.
I didn't see a map.
Oh, okay. It's in the updated packet. Oh, that's okay. That's good. So it would be...
Did I not suddenly...
No, it's just I... It's on a page that I... Yeah, I see. I didn't see it. I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just it tells the blood that it's blocking the straight fog. And it shows the... Where the retailers are.
Could you say that it was like specific to depot bay or general in Lincoln County that one-third of the retailers are not compliant with minor?
That is the next one question. It would be the entire county for the retailers. And I don't have details on that report.
Well...
I'll get more information as we get further into the program. Okay, I'm going to speed through one update so I can hand it over to Jamie. And I know I'm already over. I am trying so hard. I follow the...
That doesn't count questions.
Oh, okay. In two thousand twenty-one, in January, we have the first tax on the inhalant delivery or vape cigarettes and then an increase in the combustible cigarette tax. Seven minutes. Those funding, the state collaborated with community-based organizations and other partners across the state to look at using those tobacco tax income differently than we have with the traditional, the taxes that already existed. The vast majority of that money went out to community-based organizations around the state to address equity issues as it's related to nicotine products. Who are the populations that are most disproportionately impacted, negative health impacts from tobacco and nicotine? And how do we reach them and develop programs, policies, interventions, and prevention efforts to help populations that our traditional voice haven't been meeting? So here locally, a lawless center applied for that commercial tobacco tax and they are really focused on our youth, especially our at-risk youth, but providing alternative activities for youth while giving them prevention education around nicotine products. But they're doing really cool stuff like kayaking and surfing and hiking and giving them really healthy alternatives and pro-social activities with that funding. So we're pretty excited to see what they're going to do. And then I'm going to give it to Jamie to talk about the flavor ban.
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much. My name is Jamie Dunphy. I am with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm thrilled to be here in front of you. Sorry I have to be virtual. I'm up here in Portland sweating like the rest of you, I'm sure, but... No, you guys are lovely enjoying the coast. Thanks for letting me talk real quick. I want to try and just piggyback off of what Sarah was saying. The way that the state of Oregon and the way the advocates approach tobacco prevention is very evidence-based and it's multifaceted and it's not ever just one thing. We raised the age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one. We raised the taxes on purchases of tobacco and including e-cigarettes or vapes for the first time. And we dedicated that money not only to public health, including the Oregon Health Plan, but also to tobacco prevention and education programs. And Oregon has been the number one state for tobacco prevention and education for the last two years running, and it's likely we're going to be it for the third year in a row. A multifaceted approach to this means that we need to also think about ways that new smokers can get access to these products. And the reality is that new smokers are children. The tobacco industry has evolved to focus on e-cigarettes that are flavored things like blueberry and chero and bubblegum flavors that the data shows us no adults are purchasing. Part of what Sarah and the Public Health Department are trying to focus on is access and thinking about the opportunities where kids can get these things easily and knowing that if there's a lot of density of tobacco sellers, the oversight is less and the incentive to have, you know, ads and coupons and discounts is higher. So by trying to do what Lincoln County Public Health is proposing, we are spreading out the problem across our community so we don't have these dense areas. Another big component of this, though, is addressing the flavors problem. Flavored tobacco use, specifically vape use, among children is up exponential levels and it is causing unbelievable health problems that we truly don't even know. One single vape cartridge can hold as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes and children are going through them in a single sitting. An advocacy organization, a coalition of advocates called the Flavors Hook Oregon Kids Coalition, has been organizing around this for the last two years. We represent sixty-five organizations across the community, across the state, from big organizations like the American Cancer Society and Kaiser Permanente and Providence Health Systems, down to neighborhood community-level organizations in every community. We got really close to a bill in the legislature that would have ended the sale of all flavored tobacco products. We had a bipartisan, bicameral bill that was in support of it. We have public polling that shows how overwhelmingly popular it was to get rid of these products and reduce the burden of the risk to our children. But as everyone knows, a significant number of new policy bills were unable to advance in the two thousand twenty-three legislative session due to unrelated legislative walkouts. We are going to try again in the two thousand twenty-four short legislative session. And in fact, State Representative Lisa Reynolds has already offered us one of her two bills to try and do it again and try and get it through in the short session. I'm going to take the opportunity while I'm here to ask if there is possibly a way that this city council might be able to help us in this effort. The coalition across the state is reaching out to city councils and county board of commissioners and school boards, asking them to help us by passing resolutions, calling on the state of Oregon to finish the work they began in the two thousand twenty-three session and end the sale of flavored tobacco across the state. We've already heard from cities across the... Across the... Outside of the Portland metro, including Lake Oswego and Happy Valley. But we'd actually heard last night from the city council in Salletts that they are going to be moving forward with one as well. And I spoke this morning with their staff about passing one through their city council. So my ask is if there's anything that you are, as a body, willing to consider to help us with this effort, we sure would appreciate it. But at the very least, I'm happy to be here to help inform you about how we are approaching tobacco control in a multifaceted way from all different angles because no one solution is ever going to stop the scourge of tobacco on our community. But tobacco is still the number one preventable... Cause of preventable death in Oregon every year. So I just talked a lot. I apologize. Thank you. I'm available for questions or clarifications if I did talk too fast.
Thank you for your presentation. Yes, did you have a question?
Do you have a draft of that resolution that folks are using that you could share with Kimberly?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to share. We have a... The American Cancer Society is an evidence-based organization, so we have the best data with the best citations relevant to Oregon specifically. And we can get even more hyper-specific, trying down to at least the county level of community data. But I would be happy to share a data or a draft with you all for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did it.
Me too.
Richard.
Any other questions?
Now, yes, just to make sure that we understand, what is this resolution? Everybody is...
Baking, baking.
Baking.
Instead of Oregon.
Baking, but not cigarettes or cigarettes.
Yeah, that is the question. Jamie, can I get to say this for a second? It is the flavor vape products. To say we are not going to use bubblegum, grape, all of those flavored vape products that our children are getting addicted to. So the resolution is asking the state to finish the work on that bill that was started.
Why don't children get addicted to this stuff? It's illegal for them to...
What a wonderful question. It is constant that our youth are accessing it, whether from a friend, an adult, a parent, a neighbor, a retailer. The fact that thirty percent of the inspections where somebody went in with an ID who was underage and the retailer sold them the products, it's just accessible. So we're working through all avenues to try to reduce the availability, increase the education, highlight the risks of using these products. And the nicotine and these vapes are highly addictive. The addiction rates are very quick. And we're seeing it. We're seeing it in Lincoln County. So it... Just to add a quick note, two, three years ago, we saw rates of... We saw our teen rates of vaping starting to increase as we kind of would have been suspended. We just saw our two thousand twenty-two healthy teens survey through Lincoln County. The school district participated. Our eleventh graders are using vape products at a rate of over eighteen percent. Eighteen percent of our eleventh graders who took the survey said that they're using vape. Five point some percent are using combustible cigarettes. So that number's going down. That vape number is increasing exponentially each year from each week.
So who sells it here in Lincoln County?
The vape products?
Yeah.
Any retailer that's selling tobacco products?
Any cigarette, even the vape.
Oh, yeah.
And the flavor additives for it. Yeah, it's prevalent. And in regards to the density ordinance, I... It's really important for us when we're laying in that approach. So of course, I am sure our county council will reach back out, but I would ask that you guys consider also supporting the ordinance across the county so that we can get all of our cities and counties on board with restricting that density and protecting our future.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, first of all, our density seems to be going down during depot bay. According to you, we just lost thirty-three percent of our...
That's fair.
Of our stuff. But you pointed out right here that there's a tobacco sales next to the kids zone. But on the other hand, that whistle-stop market has been selling cigarettes there for the last forty or fifty years. And the... The kids zone has only been there for maybe twenty.
Sure.
So how do you resolve a conflict like that?
Well, so we had a lot of discussion around conflicts like that. So, which is part of the reason why we started with included public schools in the ordinance writing. Because once we start looking at child caring agencies, are we going to start looking at home daycares? Or we look like, who qualifies? How will you define that? So I guess we know that there are tobacco retailers and we're not asking to... For people to stop, those who are legally operating a retail license right now would be grandfathered in, meaning if they were within a thousand feet of a school, which clearly they're not here in depot bay, or if they're within a thousand feet of another retailer, it would be protecting that future density growth that... We don't have the crystal ball. What we know is that in other areas where we produce them to be, we see positive impacts. So when we can layer those positive impacts, we're just trying to take the steps where we can to support our community.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion to ban the e-cigarettes as proposed by our friends here? But I would be reluctant to make that motion and include anything along density ordinance. Would that be appropriate?
I think we need to do a resolution.
A resolution?
Yeah, by resolutions. I think it's premature tonight. You know, we're making motions and voting. We need to research a resolution and do that.
I want to pay up. Thank you for the opportunity that you've earned me to come and provide that update.
Absolutely. A good update.
And it sounds like it's two separate resolutions, right? So there's one resolution that's asking the state to move forward with the legislation they've already got. And the other one would be a local resolution that would go through our zoning, I'm guessing. And it would limit future development within a thousand feet of an existing retail.
Yeah, so what would happen is somebody, a business would apply for tobacco, if it was enacted, a business would apply for a tobacco retail license through the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue would take a look at all the licensed legally operated businesses and determine if they're within that thousand feet to either approve or deny it for a festival license.
So would that be a local ordinance or are you saying that's a county ordinance?
So the county is entertaining doing this ordinance. However, we have like seven to eight retailers on county property. So we're going to each city to say, would you join us in this effort in doing the density ordinance? So that we're covering the entirety of Lincoln County, including our seven jurisdictions.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions?
No.
All right.
All right. I appreciate you.
Appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
And we'll be working on this as well. And thank you, Jamie. That was very, very helpful. Okay, moving on, we have commission and group reports, emergency preparedness.
Lindsay, would you like to start?
Yeah, we... So we met yesterday and we really got boots on the ground. We looked at a potential location for a cache. And the radios weren't ordered in time, so we didn't miss the radio training. You're interested in what we say for that for next month? But we had some really good talk. We talked a little bit about the Maui incident that I know of one of the seven of our minds and about their emergency warning system, at least what's come out so far, about the emergency warning system. I don't know what. Of... We talked about the new cache that we're getting here at City Hall and site prep for that. There was a representative from the fire department here, Patrick Gans, who's a great guy. And they had also... So the fire department also has a catcher, but nobody's really looked at it in a while. So they got in there and they're... It seems like there's a lot of momentum really to work together on this. So that's... It's really exciting. We're also talking about potentially putting together another community event in October concerning the radios and maybe the emergency warning system, depending on what council decides, and recap on wildfire, which is the fire department. And then also to try to align it somehow with the Great Shakeout, which is right around that time. So, yeah, I really feel like there's a lot of momentum with the group joining.
Yeah, it's... It was a really good meeting. One thing, a couple of things to add to that. I was really, of course, concerned about Maui. I have a niece that lives there and I have family there. And as I told the council members, if we are ever going to be successful in trying to get donations, they've tripled in, not too much. We're still looking through donations for food, for tools, for bedding and what have you, as we're getting the caches, trying to put stuff in the caches and stuff. And I think if we haven't been asking for donations, even if we receive cash donations and that's certainly one I want to give those to, what better time to do it than now when we're in a tragedy, what's happened and why? So that's part of the reason that we thought that we could do it at that particular time. And let's see, what else? Another thing that was interesting, speaking of Mahina, I was looking today online about it and they were saying that... And they were saying that, um, even though you have FEMA, you have the Red Cross, you have the National Guard, the communities are coming together, like we've talked about, having little islands and communities. And so the communities are like taking care of each other. And FEMA is like, you know, the road is coming, but that's where we're going to be. Only worse than to have something like that. And my niece, for instance, is, who lives there, is kind of like in, trying to be, uh, working with the animals and was going with the cats and the dogs and the birds and reptiles and things like that. So she's working with humans, obviously there's a lot of work. But that was interesting because that's what we're talking about. That we will have to rely on ourselves more so in order that we have tents and places to sleep and things of that nature. So let's see, what have you? And we've also thought that if we do something, we're asking for donations, have it at the community center and have hot dogs and hamburgers and stuff. And we all agreed that we want to take this on as a committee as much as possible after having the city sun. But to take this as a committee, to take it off the hands of the council, because it's a big job. And, um, that's it, thank you.
Hi, Fred.
Um, thank you. So, one of the problems with the Otis fire, and again in this line of, uh, fire, was that the electric utility did not shut down the electricity.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if that's something that, um, perhaps the emergency committee could, or emergency committee could, um, maybe arrange a presentation with P U D or, or, um, somehow approach them to see what their policies are and then, or maybe come to the city. I don't know what's appropriate, Mayor, but if we could, uh, maybe try to plan upfront for automatic shutdowns or maybe Brady knows about that, but I don't.
It's a good idea. One thing to add, um, is that the, the radios that we're going to be purchasing, we're looking, we're kind of getting them through the city council, of course, the mayor's short, um, members of the, this, um, office staff and some, um, of Brady's staff and what have you. And, um, one of our committee members had a really good question. She said, if, if we had the radios that we were now, it would have worked. And the fire department gentleman said, yes, it would have been better than what you had because the cell towers are down, the electrical towers are down, and at least the radios can communicate with each other.
Yeah, even if there are meters down and the electricity is down, these radios will still work. And the way Deepo Bay is set up, you'd still be able to talk to people in the community. Yeah, even if that, that outside was off.
That's right. And then another committee member says, well, what about me? I don't have a radio. What am I going to do? And we're, um, we're going to be able to show them the radios, give them the keys to purchase a radio, tell them how to purchase it. And then that's where the island, this concept comes into mind. You're approaching an island and you're surrounded by water, so if you have a radio, you can talk to, you know, hills of Deepo Bay or, you know, South Beach or something like that, Lincoln County, you'd be able to do that. And you can coordinate with it in yourself as to what's going on, what you need. But, um, the radios have been, um, studied by, um, Michael Dane and Eric Zabones.
Yes.
For a long time, and these are the radios that they're.
Yeah, this is their recommendation.
And I actually have some information. I mean, I haven't said I would show everybody. They're like, um, like ninety bucks or something like that.
Which is reasonable.
And this is interesting because this is also, uh, an article that, um, another committee member handed to us. And she said, this is from the Register of Our Department News Garden, it says, study past personal experience increases the likelihood of disaster preparations. And so this is all what we're talking about now. But, um, here's the radio that we're looking at now. Pass it over to you guys.
And so we'll have a, we'll have a training, a workshop, I think, that our group before, before this event in October. And then the event in October, we'll have the radios there and all that, you know, the public can check them out and we'll have information, so if they do want to purchase, um, it's.
I, I think, you know, if, um, if I wasn't on city council, we could probably purchase one, just to have it.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. In past, um, emergency preparedness thing, um, we had, what was talked about was, um, wired up radios, you know, so you could hear, but it wasn't transmitting.
Right.
So, so people could, if they didn't want necessarily need a transmitter anymore, they could have a much chicker one that at least could receive. So that might be worth considering because that ninety is not a huge amount, but it must have been a grand, it's, it's an investment for our legal.
Um, I guess I just wanted to add, if that's okay. Just the idea that our, our current, we, emergency warning system, is that the correct word for it? So there's five towers in Deepo Bay. They look very similar to what I've seen from Maui. Like the pictures from Maui look a lot like what we've got. Um, so we have five in our community, two are currently working. The technology is pretty old, it's very expensive. I kind of look at it as a money pit. We had a conversation about, you know, is this something we want to continue to invest in? Or, or is it better to move on to these radios and really kind of decommission those? So we, we're gonna, um, talk about it at our next meeting and give a recommendation to council on, on what our committee, um, is gonna propose. But I think if we do come to some kind of a decision as council, um, in a timely fashion, that could be part of the October meeting is kind of getting information out to the public about these towers and about the radios and kind of opposing comments, um, potentially moving forward and making sure people are looking at it.
Because it was jam-packed, it was moving really fast. Um, I would recommend that you can hear it, um, go to the city website, look for minutes, hear it, um, pull it up. It was really a good meeting with a lot of.
Good information.
A lot of good information.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Harper, steering.
Ah, yes, uh, today, um, the city has.
Could you come to the table, Jack?
Sure.
Just need to make sure that our audience can hear you.
Okay.
Which would be Carla and Judy.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, today, uh, the city held its, uh, and, uh, John Olson, who's lead engineer or project, who's the engineer, held a pre-bid conference, uh, here at September, it was two o'clock. And there were seven, seven contractors represented. And after their.
Two more than he planned for.
Yeah. After the, uh, after the presentation and any questions that they asked at the time, then they all went down with, uh, boy Hildrein, the harbor master, the tour harbor, and he answered any questions they would have on that, so. That's, uh, step one, still a long process, um, getting there, getting to the actual docks themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And did you want to do harbor one, you were here also?
Um, I think we could probably wait until it comes up and.
And then.
I mean, agenda.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jack.
Um, how's this, we had no meeting planning. Judy, did you have anything on, on planning the thing?
I asked her if she wanted to talk, or did she just want to be available for questions? Oh, she didn't answer.
Judy Fassa is online, if she has questions.
She is.
No, okay. Parks, no. Parks meeting and Simon, they canceled their, um.
Everybody got that, right?
Yeah.
Event.
Yeah, they, they canceled it, Simon, because one of their primary people on helping be prepared for the presentation of the event, C A is fighting. We're going to use the wire provided for.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, is there any public comment this evening? And your room for public, this evening is good. Let's go on to unfinished business. We're doing a second reading of the harbor ordinance amendment, almost three four zero two three. It is an ordinance repealing or replacing ordinance number two five two, chapter ninety-two, City of Deepo Bay Harbor Ordinance. Is there a motion to accept reading this ordinance entitled only?
I'll move to accept reading entitled only.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
It's been moved to second to read ordinance number three four zero dash twenty-three entitled only. Ready to discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I have a question. And as I recall, there was, was, uh, some change in the definitions regarding, uh, the commercial nature of fishermen, separating out the six packs from the charter fisherman. And I apologize for not being attached with those changes.
We're not, uh, we're not discussing the ordinance right now. We're discussing reading entitled only. So I need to take a vote on that and then we'll do open discussion.
Oh, good, very good, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, same thing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so at this time, I am going to open up a public hearing on ordinance number three four O dash twenty-three. And then we will do discussion for council.
Does anybody need to give an explanation of what the heck I did to y'all? Well, pardon, you may blame Jack. Come on up, Jack.
Thank you.
That you came up with something else now we need to talk about. So some of this, the red that I added were things that Jack would come in and talk to me about, related to the things that council or rec suggested as point of recommendations. And it sounds like I might not have that a hundred percent correct. But then some other things where, uh, one of the other things was a, a boo-boo, I noticed, when Carla and I were looking at this, this, and this is, uh, everything won't make, uh, sorry, page seven of the.
Twenty-six, I think, the twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you, she was reading four. Um, so the suggestion at the top of track, settlement transferring from dockside to vessel or vice versa was a suggestion made by Jack. The, um, storage boxes and crab pots that not allowed, that's incorrect. We, the council did decide that they didn't want storage pots or storage boxes stored, but the crab pots was still open for discussion and that's why we're having that special meeting. So in order to clarify that, and because there was no decision on it, in order to pass the ordinance, we put the original language back in there, which essentially says crab pots are allowed to be stored on the docks and, um, except the designation of the harbor master. That's the only reason it's in there, because the intent was to have that special meeting and iron out the details of those crab pots. But everybody was in agreement, including the captains, that they were happy with the idea of not having any personal property on the docks, all that little stuff is what I heard. And I remember a couple, hearing a couple captains say they were okay with that. So the next item, um, was, again, the, the idea was since no decisions were formally made on the crab pots, we went back to the original language that was in the ordinance. So nothing, it changes nothing, everything, this gets approved tonight. Everything is changed and approved with the exception of any new crab pots. And then the last thing, um, uh, council, I believe you have mentioned about doing the penalty fee because the hundred, I remember you saying, well, maybe we're okay with that being in there, so that was also changed. But, um, Jack has another change that he, uh, wants to go over tonight, and it was clarifying the steps and stairways. My concern about the vessel steps and stairways is that steps can be, uh, defined in any number of ways, including, um, step stools, um, you know, stair, uh, step ladders, any one way. So we talked about clarifying that and that's, do you want to share with what you came up with on that?
Yes, uh, what we, what I proposed is that, uh, no other personal property would be allowed, uh, on the public docks, except for passenger load and unload, steps and stairways marked with the boat name. When not in use, the steps and stairways will be kept out of the passageway, meaning, and maybe it's a better term to use, but where people walk along the dock. They can be stored in the middle of the crab pots.
Um, well, first of all, seeing all these changes that we haven't discussed.
But, wait, this is not from our last meeting. You changed it since our last meeting, since what we agreed.
Yeah. So that's why.
That is, it feels like sneaky and wrong.
Yeah. But I don't like the idea, those, those steps and stairways need to be on the boat after the passengers leave. I don't want anything on the docks, period. I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're beyond that. I have to listen to the insurance agent. Um, those need to be put on the dock after the people load it, and then they put them back on the dock when they're gonna unload. They can put them in their holds, they can do whatever they want with them, put them in the captain's, you know, wheel packs. They don't belong on our docks, period. And I, so, and I don't know what passageway means, but this is really upsetting to me that we said nothing on the docks except crab pots until we figure that out.
No, we didn't even say the stuffs. We didn't say crab pots, well, yes, we didn't. We said. No, we said we're gonna, we're gonna say storage boxes are not allowed, and we didn't actually even talk about crab pots. So this, adding a crab pot line that got in is not what we talked about.
Until, until we have work session.
That's right.
So then, then.
What I want our getting is to come out, storage of crab pots is allowed on the docks? No, that can't be in there. And if after the meeting we want to change this, that's fine, but I don't want it in there and then have to change it. Based on our insurance, there is no way we can approve an ordinance saying, yes, put this stuff on. How many crab pots? Whatever you want, thirty, fine. After we have our insurance company telling us, this is not right? We can't, this, this is really bad idea for insurance.
May I clarify things a little bit on that? Because I haven't had time to write the thing. First of all, Councilor Baddefield, I promise, this was not an attempt to sneak on anything. This was an attempt to rewind things based on what we thought we heard was that until the crab pot issue was resolved in September, the intent was still to pass an ordinance.
Yes, but that line should come out. There should be nothing saying crab pots are allowed.
But if we take that line after, you're making a change.
Yes, yeah. Yes, exactly. We're making that change, based on what our insurance has told us.
Yes. Okay.
And if we have a meeting where there's a change to that, then we can come back.
Okay.
It does agree, yeah.
See, I thought I missed, I thought I understood it the other way around.
Yeah, I know, that's what I understood.
So I didn't understand this, but, and as far as the insurance is concerned, this is part of that follow-up I need to do. Her biggest issue, her biggest concern, not a hundred percent happened with the crab pots, but they were, they were nicely stacked and neat. It was all.
It's all the other stuff that's, that would be a problem.
That's fine, I, I am not gonna be approving anything. I personally will not vote for anything that says crab pots are allowed.
Yeah, if I, if I hadn't known, right, if I had, I would have presented this to you guys tonight.
That, that line is a line for me.
If I had known that there was something to do about it, but it's.
I thought I was.
Fred did put it back in. I remember you. Yeah, because until that discussion with one session.
I didn't remember that.
Yeah. But what I don't understand, um, if number one wasn't changed, I don't remember number one, and crab pots are allowed on the docks and the designated storage areas is assigned by the harbor. That was in the original ordinance. Was that one that you reviewed last time? No. It was struck out.
That's right, it was struck.
Right, it was struck out, but when everybody decided to have that meeting in September, we spoke about whether or not it was passing on this and we kind of rolled things back.
We are not having designated, we're not having designated storage areas on the docks for anybody. Those are public docks.
I, I, I am willing to, whatever you want, this is just my understanding.
Yes, okay, that's fair, that's why I looked at it.
And then we, that came out, you, I, I want to look at.
Yeah.
So I remember I took, um, storage, and everybody was okay with it.
Yes.
We left the crab pots in number two temporarily until a work session, we figure something out. But number one, I don't remember anything about, um, that phrase, so I'd like to go back to. Yeah, maybe double check. I can double check. Okay. Um, but, um, from what I remember, um, there was no intent to slide anything by and no intent to deceive. I might have misunderstood what we got on week, but I was pretty sure that I felt that we said, well, until we have a September meeting, we still want to pass this so we can get the billing out. And then we could do what? We'll do an amendment on a crab pot, so.
Yes, I'd rather do an amendment to make it looser.
That's.
I want it tight, and if we make an amendment, we use it.
That's what you wanted, but I misunderstood that.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah. And maybe I went, I don't, I didn't speak up much last meeting because I. You understood that that was, I understood that that's, that we said, okay, no storage boxes, and we're not gonna have the crab pots in here, we'll be with it later. But the crab pots in here saying crab pots are allowed.
I can have a question.
Okay, your change was storage boxes and crab pots are now a lot not allowed to be stored on the docks, period.
Yeah, there is no storage of any private property on the docks.
Well, no, and then I struck, was what I had said was I. was what I had said, was I struck the words and crab pots until the work session. And so it did, yeah.
Okay, well, I, I, yeah, I don't think we catch it.
But that's fine, but what I'm still questioning is um, that phrase, number one, that I don't remember there. Which, number one, storage box? Which, which number one?
And crab pots are allowed on the docks in designated storage areas, as is signed by the harbor master at each market holder.
You know, again, and this was probably my thought, uh, after talking, we were talking about it and figuring that since it hadn't been formally said that what we were doing with crab pots, leaving that in there.
So, so number one, we're. Going in with no storage boxes shall be allowed on harbor docks, period.
Right.
And the rest of that is struck, in number one.
I just lost my page, I'm sorry. So you wanted to say, storage boxes are not allowed to be stored on the docks, period.
We've.
That was number two before.
Okay, but if we do that, um, there, it doesn't address crab pots at all. Right, so crab pots will be two, so we'll address crab pots at number two, but number one is just stored, storage boxes are not allowed on harbor docks, period.
Is everybody supportive of that? Am I making this change?
Yeah.
Do you know that crab pots is the next, is number two?
Don't you vote on them?
Did we not vote on that?
We're not, we're, I'm just saying, this is the change we want.
Is there a way to call off what we looked at last time? We do that, please, because, um, this is.
I'm bringing that bottom, I do have to do lots, let me bring that up, in a second. Okay, this was what was, we need to page seven and then.
Really though, why not just deal with storage boxes in one and deal with crab pots at two? Regardless of the argument over the crab pots, we just deal with the storage boxes in one.
Okay, I'm bringing it up.
Right, and then the crab pot argument is number two.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, that's a good way of dealing with it, I'm just, um.
Like, my understanding was to put all discretion away from the harbor master and designating things.
Yeah, we love.
And, and, no, that was probably, that, that I should have probably not put back in there, we were just rolling it back to what the original was since nobody read on particular things, but it sounds like I misunderstood that you're completely fine with that.
I thought we did agree on that, I think that there was like almost a unanimous consensus.
Okay.
That stuff is off.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, can you guys, I don't know, can you guys see that?
No.
Let's see if I can make it bigger, I don't know how big I can make that.
Yeah, so J stated, J, no, J one, storage boxes and crab, that, it does say crab pots are not, it does say it, it does say it.
Nope, that didn't.
One in this version says storage boxes and crab pots.
You're right, two is like that.
One does, one does two, though, you're right.
I don't know, I, I didn't.
I can't.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know. Okay, it should be on the bottom of your screen, uh, here we go, how's that?
Give a second, I'm making it bigger. So one is storage boxes and crab pots are not allowed to be stored on the docks.
How's that?
That's what one said there. Store, storage boxes and crab pots are not allowed to be stored on the docks.
So then, number one was where we all agreed, I thought, to strike storage boxes, right?
No, to strike the crab pots from number one.
Yeah.
Yep, so we just say storage boxes are not allowed on, to be stored on the docks, okay?
Right.
Right, so that, that was just.
So at the end, it was struck, but you put it back in the, these, in the designated storage areas, so that. I'll, I'll link it, roll it back to the original, because there had been, my understanding was there had been no problem, so my apologies for that.
It's okay, I promise, it was from the. So storage boxes are not allowed to be stored on the docks, period, right?
Storage boxes are not allowed to be stored on the docks, period.
Yeah, got it, that's one, right, and then the crab pot argument is just in number two, I think, is that the only reference to the crab pots on the docks is number two, J two?
J one.
Not anymore, it's, okay, number J one now says, storage boxes are not allowed to be stored on the docks, that's all J one says.
So it's just.
So J two is what is talking about the crab pots now, and my understanding is it's only J two now.
We're talking about the two weeks and that, that stuff, we're talking about what was shown on the latter version.
Is, I'm just saying, is there anywhere else in the ordinance, like that was, it says the crab pots, it's just in J two, right?
No. That was the one that.
So it's clean, it's just in this one spot.
Well, then, then last time, though, um, no other personal property allowed on the public docks, and that disappeared. So we need to get that back in and then maybe have a third.
No, I swear that was the.
Where it was crab pots.
See, what we did last time is we just didn't mention.
Oh, no, I think we shouldn't. No other personal property is there, so excuse me.
Yes, okay, I was like, I.
But what we did last time by just striking the crab pots out of one is we didn't allow it or disallow it exactly, we just kind of hunted it. But now in this version, it's like explicitly allowed.
Well, I think that's what, unfortunately, that's what we left it until we have a work session, yes.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I disagree, I think that we should take out that line, I think that this should be tight and if we have the work session and there is some way that we can loosen it after that work session, then we can do it, rather than doing the opposite.
I disagree too, I think we should leave the crab pots in for now, because.
So when is crab season?
Year round.
Exactly, so what, what, it's saying, how, how many crab pots can it have on, can they have thirty? Are there specific spaces on public docks for private property to be stored? I fully disagree, fully disagree with it.
Also, pardon me, Carla, Carla, you asked about other crab, crab pot stores, that was just somewhere else.
Yes.
Carla mentioned, she said, she knows a lot more detail than I do, is there is a reference to crabbing off of docks and removal at dusk.
Okay, but that's crabbing, like active crab.
So that's fine. I just wanted to share what she told me.
So this is just the basic argument of, are we gonna allow crab pots or not? Essentially with this, what we're saying is year round, people can have as many crab pots as they want. I fully disagree, I am basing my argument on our insurance. I believe that we can pass this ordinance while not allowing or disallowing, I'm fine with just not having it mentioned right now of crab pot storage, and then after the meeting, if we come back and we need to change it, we can.
I disagree. So would you leave it in?
I can't.
Mayor, I would like to agree with you on this, but I can't, I, I move counsel betting to run this. And the reason is, I think there is a solution to the crab pot deal. Uh, the solution is not to leave them on, because it's too hard to find a commercial insurance carrier. Once you lose one, getting insurance companies right off is almost impossible. Markets are terribly loyal, so I think that, that, that's what the deal is. In this meeting that's coming up, I'm absolutely convinced that the city, which owns property down there and with all the, the dock space that rings the harbor, there's got to be a solution. There's gotta be solutions to this, and we just have to think outside the box, but it can't be on the docks. I mean, if our insur, I don't want to lose our insurance. That would be a disaster that would be off the charts.
I have a question, um, is the insurance representative gonna be at the workshop?
Yes. Yes, she's on vacation right now. But I, I am seeking clarification from her, because during her walkthrough, she expressed a concern about the crab pots, but not to the level that she expressed a concern about all of the other tributary harbor masters that were, and there was a. So, um, I, I also want to deal with this vessel steps and stairways. Um, I don't want them, um, um, to be allowed other than when active boarding and unboarding. I'm okay with marking it with the name and that sort of thing. But they're not, they're generally not that big and can, can be put on the boat when they're after they load the passengers and put them in the hold if necessary.
I guess I'm gonna talk to the.
That's three votes.
What's that?
That's in here, right?
Well, that wasn't all the steps last time, I'm not satisfied by that.
That's a red, that's a red. Yes, red in this time.
And you want it or you don't want it?
I, I'm okay with allowing them on the public dock, docks during active loading and unloading. What I'm not okay with is leaving them on the docks when the boats go out.
Right, it says they'll be stored in the vessel.
They will be stowed on the, when not in use, the steps and stairways will be stowed on the vessel and kept out of the passageway. Oh, but I heard Jack saying, well, how I read that, um, when not in use, it can be interpreted to mean, oh, well, we're gonna come back and unload the passengers, so I wanted to be clear that that when they're not actively loading and unloading, those steps and stairways will be off the docks.
So, I don't think we even need to pass this tonight, do we?
No, I mean, it just, it's our billing again, but it's fine.
Why were they leaving the billing?
Because we have to share the rules with them and we don't have a final copy of what all the rules are.
Well, can I, can I ask a procedural question? Okay, so with the changes we're gonna talk about tonight, like obviously there's a couple of us who wouldn't vote for it, but there might be enough votes. Pass it, would they, would it be able to be passed based on the changes, though, that have been made? If the votes are there?
Yes.
It would be able to pass on a second reading?
So, I mean, we should just.
Yeah, we're gonna have a second reading.
So none of these are like major, major changes, which would mean rolling back the approvals, like.
So they're starting at first reading.
Right, they're, 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 I know in everybody's mind are major changes, but they're minor changes paper wise.
Question, uh, the rules, you say we can't bill after most, because that's annual billing, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And that should have gone out to our.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay, but I want to change the steps and stairways.
The way I read it, is the steps and stairs will be stowed on the vessel and kept out of the, it's, it's, it's either.
His suggestion was to remove the stowed on the vessel and just move them out of the passage, right? So just remove that, Jack's suggestion is just to remove that um, on the vessel and just say out of the passage.
Wait, I, I don't. What did you say?
Being, being out of the walkway on the dock, stored in the center with a grab.
No, I don't want them on the docks, I want them when they're not actively loading or unloading to be on the dock vessel, so. They shouldn't be on the docks.
Question, is to get another.
We're probably talking about three, three steps. Yeah, and they can be put on the boat in the hold.
Three boats that have steps.
Right, they're really big and heavy.
One, for sure, yes.
One, one, one I know of, but.
Now, three at most.
Everybody else you can just walk on.
Uh, okay, so I'd like to ask, because it seems like we're gonna move forward, and I feel like I've made my, my thoughts pretty clear, but I wonder if there is some kind of midway that we can get to and not just allow everybody to have as many crab pots as possible year round. But it's not gonna be rolled back, ever, if we pass this, there's no changes that we're gonna have.
Oh, but we're gonna make an amendment.
But it won't, Fran, it won't.
Well, I'm.
The only way that it'll change is if we make it tight and then come back and loosen it, I just, this is the way it works, I see. Um, but I think that we should put some limits. There's gotta be some limits to how long you can have them on there, this says year round as many as you want. That we should put some, some limits, it can't be all or nothing, it's, there's gotta be something, I mean.
What would you propose?
I would propose no. But if you were gonna keep it in, which it sounds like you are, put some kind of a limit, that's not a ridiculous thirty steps of them.
We heard that some of the boats have as much as three, five, I think, crab pots.
How many, how many pots do they have down there now?
I don't know, I've heard the, um, larger boats take fourteen out, and take fourteen out, the smaller boats take less than.
I think that said thirty.
Okay, so can we say, can we say fourteen?
But having this decision without, I don't, at first, how many pots?
Well, our, well, my, I mean, honestly, my decision is no, but if it's gonna pass, there should be some limit.
Yeah, but they go on like crab pots.
Okay.
I know.
All right.
See, that's something that could be squared away.
I'm trying to.
They are, at that, I mean, it's a meeting.
But that's what I'm saying, it, that meeting is not gonna change anything if you already have all you want.
With the people.
If you already have as many crab pots as you want for the whole year, why would anything change after that, you've already gotten a big ticket, like.
Because they know the insurance agents have either, they've already discussed things and come to a solution then.
Everyone knows other things to be pointed out, but they can't have more crab pots, so. But this says they can.
And so would change.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just can't vote for it, I'm sorry, I, I would rather see the whole thing start over and not do, then allow crab pots, they're unloaded. I just, I just think it's a terrible idea.
And also put a limit on it.
So there isn't, put a limit on it now, then.
We can't allow it.
You can put a limit on it, I guess you can, I mean, if we're gonna go back and change it later, then let's go back and change it later, but it has some limit.
I don't think you can.
Mark my word, you are not going back and changing it.
I don't think you can, but, 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 if you talk to the boat captains and play out, how many crab pots do they take out each time they?
So why hasn't this been part of the negotiation coming on here? I don't understand that.
Because it was never an issue. It's never been an issue.
Okay.
That's right.
I, I, okay, I don't know, I'm ready to vote, I don't know if we want to argue that anywhere.
Um, I'm gonna, I would like to make sure I'm gonna get this.
Problem is, move to, move to disapprove the ordinance on second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, yeah. Disapproved, not approved the ordinance on second reading.
Then we can't bill.
Yeah, that's right. If, if you guys aren't voting to tighten it up and then have a meeting and loosen it, I am not willing, I, I'd rather not bill anything for it.
No, we would just need to.
I just don't have an amendment.
So moved in second bid to disallow the ordinances. Went forward. Uh, I think we'll do the headcount.
Okay.
Counselor Beasley?
Aye.
Counselor Bennington?
Yes.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Rec?
No.
Mayor Short?
No.
Counselor Sovereign?
Yes.
I'm forgetting someone, sorry, Counselor Watson. Measure this fit. Okay, so. Do you want me to?
Really, is, is it a boat, is it a tie?
Yeah. No, it's four, three. No, it's four, no, three, yes. So the next step will be then to look at these changes from tonight and clarify and decide that's the vote you wanted, somebody would need to make a motion that that could try to go forward. But I want to walk through these changes, because I don't want to mess these up. So I started writing these down, and the first one that I have is that, this is all on page seven or whatever it is in the packet, no tools on the item three above, are you okay with except when transferring from dockside to vessel or vice versa?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, the second one, I think we're pretty good on, is the one that says, um, storage boxes are not allowed to be stored on the docks, everybody's in agreement on that, okay? And then this next one, I started typing it to see if I could, this, no other personal property will be allowed on the public docks except for steps and stairways marked with boat name and only during active loading and unloading. When not in use, the steps and stairways will be stowed on the vessel, period.
Yes.
Okay, and the last one in that paragraph is that no time will the penalty fee be less than one hundred. Okay.
So, um, there is a phrase about storage of crab pots?
Yes, what do you want to do with that?
Um, I think, um, that should be the number three, so it's set out separately. So then if we amend it, it should be amended right there.
Let me just make, let me, I'm sorry, I thought I had it up, let me bring it up.
You might, you might want to make the rest of it three, though, because.
Okay.
Yeah, because two.
Because it's, it's like no other personal property, that kind of leaves off it.
Yeah, so number three, so.
So two, storage of crab pots is allowed.
And number three is no other person.
Yeah, the rest of it, tell them to.
Yeah. Like, I'm gonna say, I'm, let's say, if you don't say no now, it'll, it'll never, it'll never get changed. If you say, if you store your crab pots, half the people that are gonna come won't show up, why do we need to show up? We gotta wait. I know, people are really looking forward to this meeting to, I've talked to a number of boat captains, and they've got great ideas. You know, all the way from parking back in your boat, even so that front thing just hanging out over the walkway, I mean, they're, they really want to participate in this process, and they're looking forward to this meeting. And if we say crab pots are allowed, they're not.
Why would they show up?
Because they know it can be amended and we intend to amend it.
You intend to amend it.
But if, I do. I, I don't believe that crab pots should be allowed on the public docks.
Well, then what? Because right now, we're trying to pass an ordinance and we should reflect what the current rules are until it's amended, well, let's say that. Okay, let's say that, I would vote for that, okay? Well, that's it.
What are we voting for, is that? What are we voting for, is that?
I think.
Look, I, I think it's kind of ridiculous to pass an ordinance with already the intention to amend it in the future, like make it like Levon it.
But we don't know what we want until we have the work session, right? We have to listen to, I mean, there's gotta be alternatives, I agree with Mr. Beasley. And, and Valerie's diagram I thought was brilliant, so I think there's workable ways, but I don't know what to say. During public, during privacy plus two weeks, and then we could put in perends, but I don't know if this is appropriate for an ordinance, to be amended after the work session.
Yeah, I do put that in there.
No, I just.
Well, you wouldn't want to.
So if, again, starting out tight and then coming out later, you would amend, what you're saying is number two would be amended.
Yeah.
To put whatever kind of like innovative ideas we'll come up with, because there is a need to innovate. You're not gonna innovate unless there's a need to.
Well, I see a real, I see a real need to innovate.
Yeah.
There's a doubt post and on this council right now to innovate, that's it, but we can't do it now, we have to listen to people.
Listen to people, get their input and how this will affect them.
And since everybody committed to doing just that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't look really good if you.
Okay, so how about just omitting it completely and not even mentioning crap pots? Then it's not allowing and it's not disallowed.
And.
Cause here it says is allowed, if you, if we just didn't mention the crap pots, I'd be, I'd be open to the idea that, okay, you can amend it later to, to actually address crap pots. But here you've addressed it and said it's allowed.
Cause this is the original wording.
There are some protections if we simply do not discuss crap pots.
If we just don't put it in there.
But we would need to remove those signs on the fence.
Yeah.
Because part of the, the issue that we would have right now is the signs say, don't have crap pots and we allow it, so. If it wasn't in the ordinance, we'd be like, it's kind of squishy for the boat captains, but it does allow us to do that, to get to the works, the special meeting and resolve it after that.
I think we should leave that how we send the remarks at the last meeting that we agreed upon with everyone, that we come back and have a workshop with them. We should honor what we said then.
So I think that's what Kim was saying, we don't have to have this thing there to have a work session.
Yeah.
Right.
But something needs to come out of that special meeting.
Yeah.
We will need to either say crap pots are allowed with restrictions or our crap pots are not allowed.
Yes. Yes.
You will.
Restriction.
Yeah, so you will need to come out of that with that being mentioned.
That's great, so.
So I see what Counselor Bennington is saying, it's just let's get this on the docks, it's not saying you can take it all, it's not saying that I have to go down and we have to tell them to remove their crap pots.
I guess that's what I thought, I don't know where it was, but that's what I saw that just kind of came up with last time, is we're gonna say no storage boxes and we're gonna punch the crap pots by not having it there, that's my, that was my understanding, and we'll deal with it at the next meeting.
Okay, so I make that a new motion. That, um, that we eliminate that, um, for storage crap pots is allowed on dockside privacy plus two weeks. Yeah, number two, so just like that, the new number two would be no other personal property, maybe allowed on the public.
There we go, and then there's no three.
No three.
And then after the meeting, we can add a three to deal specifically with crap pots.
Yeah.
Or shift, I mean, or shift things down. Yes.
That was a motion I have to second.
Okay, okay, um, just to clarify, cause again, I don't wanna mess this up, what are we fine with? No, no, we moved number two, crap pots are allowed. Number two is now no other personal property, mark with boat name, boat name and only during active loading and unloading. And then when not used, the steps and stairways will be stored on the vessel. Okay?
Yes.
We happy?
Yeah.
I could sure use a cigarette right now.
Okay, so what we need is a motion to, um, that.
Well, we have a motion.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, do what, end of the, oh, I am, I apologize, sorry.
Before we do that, okay, one reminder thing, well, you guys tell me if it's mine or not.
Page nineteen.
Yeah, page nineteen of, it's, uh, the other change in there that Counselor Rec has wanted to have the city council. And then remember during the meeting, we said, uh, we talked about whether or not it should go through the harbor commission first, and then we talked about the delay with the time and stuff like that. Well, then it was wondered if maybe since like, for example, somebody has a utility dealing hardship and they can't pay for the utility, they'll need, the city puts them on a payment plan, I mean, we do it, and we don't bring it to the council and say, these people need to know a payment plan, um, we actually approve it, so what they're suggesting is to eliminate any of that, just have staff approve it, and I put city reporter in there, but it can be, it would just be staff who would follow a process like we did with any other. And it's certainly something we could bring during project updates back to the council, but that was the suggestion by, just to say.
Is it?
Any concerns about that?
Okay.
Okay.
So that's our motion? What was the motion? We were going to strike to, um, approve the. Just, uh, we're gonna. These ordinance with, um, the changes of.
Isn't that not, there's a more detailed one about keeping a crap pot on the dock.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah. Wait, but it's on the whole ordinance, not just that one part, is that correct?
Yeah, with the changes that we just said, um, um, striking that whole thing up. Storage crap pots is allowed enough, you know, all the other changes.
Right. Yeah.
All the other changes. But just.
So right now they're not allowed or disallowed?
That's right, just there, yeah. And then after the work, special meeting, we'll have the rest, there we go, and, and whatever change we make in that special meeting will be J three.
Can you make a change?
It's a work session.
Yeah, we can amend it.
No, well, we have a special meeting, but I would have to, they would have to say, this is what we wanna do, staff go forth and fix this and then bring it back to another meeting. So we'd essentially go through the process to approve amendment to the ordinance. So yes, after the meeting, after the meeting, yes. During the meeting, because it's a special meeting and I wanted them to be able to make a, a motion to determine something at that meeting.
On the twelve.
On the twelve, so when they come in and they get all the presentations from everybody, the council will have the ability to make a motion and agree upon something that, and then direct staff to go through, but the council doesn't have to.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, make a motion.
Fran, thank you.
And then Val's. Okay, thank you.
You don't want the motion as recorder?
I do.
Can you read it to us?
Motion to make the changes that I read to the council, including the one with the changing the harbor commission and the city council to the same recorder.
And are we also approving the ordinance?
Yes.
With those things?
And, yeah, right, okay, great.
And adopting the ordinance.
Got it.
Any further discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nice job.
Okay, guys, just move forward here, uh, do business, okay, um. Sarah and I have been talking about this cash basis accounting for a long time, Eric Rose, and she started here, and, um, she's had lots of input from our CPAs and from other, um, resources that she's researched. And basically, this is gonna make it very helpful for going forward with our, if we can ever get a CPA to get us an audit done, um, for our audits, because our accounting software is still.
That's not why we're not getting our.
I know, I know, it's, it's just, it's gonna simplify all of our record keeping by getting.
Cash basis just basically means when, when we write a check, when we enter cash, that's gonna be item to record. Otherwise, you have to keep track of if something comes in and something comes out, and it becomes an account during some minutes, a lot of points stat. Okay?
Yes. So, um, I understand that and I, I wanna keep it simple, but I was concerned with this, as a note, cash basis is not favored by, you know, accepted accounting principles, so, once our audits are up to date and, um.
We have what software, we will go back to. No, uh, pardon me, I don't ever intend to go back unless I have to.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't, I talked to our auditor about it and I said, I want to do this, is there a problem? This was, one, Cody was talking to me, um, and he said, no, there isn't a problem, the city determines what method of accounting they wanna do. We, he said it's not generally accepted principle, but because we are a small city, we're not.
Okay.
Completely governed by those, we choose which ones we can follow, but the city always gets to make the choice.
Was it about the contract rings or any?
No, 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 no. They just want to make it clean by saying, this is your method of accounting, the council approves it, but it doesn't affect anything except basically how we do our day to day, that's it, that's all I've got.
I have a question, um, having spent twenty plus years on QuickBooks, you press the button, cash or accrual, easy peasy, it's probably not that easy for you.
No.
No, easy button, but I need to tell you, cash, huge difference, way easier, much, much, much cleaner.
A lot of the problems we're having with our system is because people kept processing this for years and they were doing it wrong.
Yeah. Yeah. So the next part of my question is, are you gonna, is it gonna be effective to allow amendment for you?
Awesome.
So we're, we're still close enough to where we can clean it up, it, it's not just a button, do you have to like go back and re-enter stuff?
No, I've already been working with them on doing that, um, but this is all.
Okay. Okay, I'm absolutely in favor of both places, you know, timing. Accounting system.
So. Okay, so there, is there, uh, a motion?
So I think, I'll make a motion to. What did I make a motion to?
To approve the.
Approve, um.
The change in accounting.
And it's a resolution?
Yeah.
Um, number five four four dash twenty three, adopting the cash basis in accounting and budget books of record and financial reports.
I'm gonna try helping you guys out, if you don't mind, by putting sample resolutions or, uh, motions at the bottom.
Thank you.
It's a very hard thing to do is to wrap a motion, so, so we kind of.
I don't think that crap pots help me with that.
Do we need to do this by title only first?
No, resolutions are completed.
Oh, resolutions. Oh, yeah, a motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept resolution number five four four dash twenty three is presented, with resolution adopting the cash basis of accounting for the annual budget, books of record and financial reports. Any other discussion on the motion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
For Watson's when she comes back.
Diane, thank you.
You're welcome, Diane.
Oh, Diane's. She's not on there, but trust me, she'll thank you.
We all will, that's great. Um, project updates, okay, we all had a chance to read our staff reports, is there any question on that?
I have a question. What is this order of a date with thirty five to Avenue right away?
I'd like to talk to you about that, if you have got a moment.
Yeah.
So, I talked to our city attorney about the next step, standing with the topic on QuickBooks. And what he's recommending, he said, we already, um, you already designated as a nuisance, and he was looking through our ordinance and he said, he could go ahead and do this too, but she doesn't have money anyway, and it would be a long run of process, so what he's recommending is that, first of all, um, our deputy has been, she got a lot of it cleaned up and he's been pushing her, um, but he's going to start with her again on Sunday, but what, uh, our attorney said to do is, if she does not comply, when he's, this is a two-fold break, one, we ask, I ask you to do an order of amendment, to have that stuff off of the right of ways. So you would be saying, city, I want this stuff gone, pay somebody to do it, put a lien on that property.
City pays.
You, no, we would pay first, but we would put a lien on the property, so that means if it went to sell, it would be commutant or entitled search.
We give that on the property and self court, you know, right, through my own.
Right, the second issue of that is what is on her property beyond the right of way. So we're, take, we have to take two approaches, so the first is to get the right of way.
Right of way, okay.
And I do need to talk to you at the next meeting about another issue with one house that does not have a driveway, but that's a different conversation. Then the other thing is dealing with the, um, personal property, her property, yeah. Uh, deputy Elston came in and talked to me today, they spoke to their DDD, DDA, which is a deputy district attorney, anyway, spoke to somebody who would know, we said we would simply treat that as a nuisance, um, and then we would also decide how we wanna handle that. We would, we declared the whole thing, we, remember, we just did the right of way stuff, we would need to, to declare that whole property as a nuisance, and then we would decide what we wanna do to clear it out. But before we do that, I'm gonna reach out to, um, somebody in crack league accounting.
Okay.
To see if they have any options, so. But anyway, that's with that order, we given it to, September fifth, I could come back with you and say, she's just not getting that stuff, putting off her property off the right of way and ask you to do the order.
Okay.
I have a question, so if we go ahead with it and we remove its stuff from the right of way, and we put a lien on the house, what have you, everything we can do, she's still who she is, and what happens if it reappears?
You mean what happens if the item's still back on the property?
Or for new items. More stuff.
More stuff. We would have our deputy address that immediately, we wouldn't allow this whole thing to come up, and it might mean that we would have to keep, and I can talk to our attorney and say, hey, is there any kind of like, something we can have, but if they're saying that this continues, like, we're gonna do this and going forward, we're just gonna continually clean it up, you know, and do it, but. We need to get off that street to allow Brady to do, take CDs, to do allowance, to get to our lines and all that stuff.
I think that would be necessary.
Yeah, I think so too, to be forward with that, thank you.
Yes, Fran. So I really support Kim going to the, uh, public.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So this, the property owner in question really is not well, and I'm really tired of dealing with this as well, but this cleanup was a really good thing that was done, there's only a little bit of personal property there. Um, so I have, um, tremendous sympathy for Brady and the sheriff and everybody else who has had to deal with this woman, but, um, this woman is not well, and, um. So, um, what Kim isn't saying, cause I did a speak to, um, the sheriff as well, is that there's a property owner at the end of Cook who doesn't have a driveway, bought the property, knowing he didn't have a driveway, now wants to get permission to put a vehicle on our right of way after we've cleaned up.
The no parking.
So I don't wanna target this property owner, if we're gonna then go and turn around and allow another property owner,
That's right.
Who hasn't even worked with their neighbors, see if they can park under, so I am not even gonna entertain allowing that property owner to put anything in the right of way if we're gonna target this other sick person, and, um, so. I understand the need for enforcement and leaving the property, but, um, it's, if, if we can get some mental health advisement of options and assistance for her or, uh, property owner or whatever, um, it's, it's really a no win for all of us and, um, yeah.
And if you don't mind me clarifying, so this property owner that bought the property, they thought when they bought the property that it was a shared driveway. Is it next door or directly next door to this?
Yeah, it's right.
I think so, yeah, isn't it directly next door?
No, it's down at the end, it's the second house, right in.
Right, and they thought.
Is that the sheriff's old place?
It's, it's just the parking car.
Yeah, so they thought they had a shared driveway, turns out they, they didn't.
I'm sorry, due diligence.
Yeah, due diligence.
Exactly, I just say, they did your due diligence, but what they're, what they're wondering, it's been suggested, what is that? So when you go down Cook Avenue, it ends at this area where a couple spots could go in there, so.
Where, but that property owner has had a vehicle that we also asked her to remove.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to clarify.
Yeah, that's, um.
Where the trail is, right?
Uh.
Is that the?
Trail.
It's the end of Cook Avenue, it, it's up out there.
Yeah.
The trail that goes to the San Diego.
Same, same, no, so no one could.
Just, it's across from the church.
Oh.
Anyway, so anyway, the street goes down and it, it would jump into Bay Street, but it's not going to, because there's like.
It's right there.
Anyway, they're wondering if the city would consider, um, saying that this particular area, which is just like the end of a street, and say that would be permitted only, and they said they would pay a permit for it.
They're allowing the parking.
That could have been overlooked for a heart wound too, it would be a valuable space.
And they have two vehicles, so right now, if you drive down there, what you see are three vehicles on the right of way, two are theirs, one is hers. Well, no, excuse me, two are hers still, one is theirs, cause, and then sometimes they have another.
I could possibly beat them on site, cause they, they can do, if they're gonna wanna pay for like a permit, they can actually pay to dig out their bank and then pull.
Their own property.
And, and pull in this.
Would we talk in, because they're pretty sure of their lines, they told me that their lines are ready, we need to put a drive.
I just need to meet them on site. Well, they may have to.
And that's gonna be very expensive.
That's just their service, their service lines, the three.
And they said that's very expensive to move that line.
Yeah, they, I, I'm not.
That's why I didn't come prepared to tell you about it, to live up to.
No, but I'm not, I'm not afraid of it.
I, I could meet them on site.
Okay. Then we'll come back to the next meeting with more information.
I also think we need to be really careful if we do remove her stuff, because she's threatening all of us.
Yeah, especially you.
Yeah.
And maybe both of you threatened.
She seems to like Casey well enough that she's not.
She threw, the property owner threw some items at her.
She threw, um, she was waving her hands, he said she did not need to do it intentionally. In fact, she apologized because she realized that when she threw up her hands.
She's also making a post on the depot bay community.
She sure did, yeah. And she's making posts about not having parking, but she has parking, it's just full.
Yeah, I don't think we should ease up, I think we need to stick with the path we're on, but I agree with having a.
I, I do wanna, yeah, I, I've thought about doing it, I thought that felt like we should do that. See if they're thinking. Deputy Elstrom wasn't a hundred percent sure we would get much, he said sometimes they're really good at helping and sometimes they're not, so.
It's worth a shot. And whether or not, uh, the woman would accept.
That's the other part. But it's worth a shot, I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to ask one more thing about the auditor, they came, they were here for two days and then you can't get ahold of them? So I am kind of, I'm very upset about this, so I've been speaking to my fellow city managers, whatever. And I've also spoken to the Lea and Oregon cities, because what the state auditors are saying is, oh, you need to let them. Because right now I just thought let them finish, we can't wait, exactly, just wait, oh, I'll just wait, you know? Right now, the last bill we got created thirty six thousand, which is ten thousand over what we signed and contracted to you okay? I just got another bill for sixty five hundred dollars.
No.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I'm not paying it, I pulled it out of the thing and I said, well, here's my problem. I could say, let's go out for an R and B, we could either say, we can expect another thirty six to forty thousand to redo nineteen twenty.
Yeah, sure.
And start over, but it'd get us maybe an audit, or my hands are tied. Until he does nineteen twenty, um, I, I ask for you, the, the agreement that was signed is not really a contract. I hate these things and we all should have an actual contract. Lot of the, of city managers are saying we're putting deadlines in there, because they're running, a lot of them are running into this, not all of them.
Okay.
Um, but.
There's no force of language in our contract?
No. And the county uses the same auditors?
Yes.
And they're having the same executive problems?
Yes, and he's going out to bid, but I haven't talked to him lately because.
The county went out to bid.
I, uh, county, the county went out to bid, so I don't know, what about professional standards and practices? What, why can't we, um, see if there's some remedy to the professional standards and practices? My concern about anything we do further stymies her ability to get nineteen twenty.
To get it done.
Meaning, for example, he could be, for all I know, cause he's not communicating with me, he could have the audit on his desk and ready to send to us, but then he gets a report and then all of a sudden we go get our nineteen twenty on and we never see it again.
Can we show up at his office or something?
I'm gonna.
Can we sit? Why, asking, he's always not around, I thought about, Kathy's asked about home, but I just don't think it matters. They, there is no punishment for them not to get this audit done, the state doesn't care.
But basically, we kinda have to just wait until they give us that one year.
Now, we're, we talked to our city attorney and we could sue them for going over our contract and that's, I tend to say, look, I've already spent this and I still have nothing, and now I owe another sixty five hundred, I've been waiting until I'm really this mad before I send an email.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
But I feel it is, if we're in a mall, I mean, and, and the state auditor's office doesn't seem to care. Dan Cutter, the city manager from Walports, in the same book we are, and he was at, we had a city meeting here last week. And, you know, he said, I talked to the auditors and they said, oh, just let me, you need to let them, they're holding us hostage.
Yeah.
And there is, what I'm hearing is there's literally nothing we can do about it and as we want to take the board. And at which case, we won't get it off.
So when, so, so when?
Yeah, I'm sorry, keep talking.
When was the last, um, communication?
Two weeks ago, um, this Friday will be three weeks.
When they were here?
Yeah.
The last time you talked to him was when they were here?
Uh-huh.
Can, is, so maybe a, a flight email asking for a status update?
Oh, I have.
Oh, you took, that's what I'm asking, you have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said when, he, not me, I, I emailed him every few days. And usually what happens is I get to a point where I say, I need to know if you're gonna be, we don't have a contract for twenty twenty one, thank God, they didn't fit. The contract that was signed should have been for three years, which is what everybody agreed to, but when, when the previous city reporter did it, for some reason she only had him signed for nineteen twenty.
Okay.
And before I knew better, I was trying to get him to sign for the rest of the year, but he never responded to me.
Uh-huh.
So, we don't have to put this to nineteen twenty, we cannot move forward until we get nineteen twenty.
So, um, are we all agreed to just go let it?
We can.
Our hands are in a choice.
Oh, I'm not done, I'm going to Lea and Oregon cities, I'm, I, and I got to supporting my fellow, um, city manager, because we have this campaign I have promised.
Oh, that's, that's, administrator.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I haven't heard back from the executive director at Lea and Oregon cities, but she was gonna talk to her staff, so I'm gonna follow up with her because.
Totally understand.
And she's still into our training.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and I'm like, I, cause I told her, I said it is beyond ridiculous that these auditors can hold our audits hostage. And that the state auditor's office is okay.
You expect us to pay the bills? No.
Well, there is not even any more incentive because of the new rule that passed, so they're not gonna hold money back from the cities anymore. So what is the incentive for a city to actually get an audit?
They're not holding money back?
Oh. So what's the incentive for a city to get one?
Well, the incentive is that we need to have a bonding capability.
Yeah.
Without, uh, uh, an audit, uh, it's very difficult to get one.
Right, except that like city manager at Walports says, I don't ever intend to be in debt. He's going through grants and all this stuff, he says, I, he said for me right now, since I don't ever intend to go out for bond or go into debt, he said, I don't care whether I get my audit right now.
We, we can't get some grants which we need.
And I asked him about that, he said, I go after the ones that don't need and he says, I haven't been asked for any backers. And I'm like, okay, he's getting, Walports getting grants, it's interesting.
I have a question, um, I'm buying just as why don't we knock on the door, but I, I don't think this is a, you know, I happen to be in the neighborhood, you know, just.
Happen to be Eugene.
Really like.
Happen to be Eugene.
Yeah, exactly, I'm going to Costco, I thought I'd come by and check on a hostage, I'm not happy to do that.
Mary, it's just not a matter of, of getting grants, you know, audits serve purpose to tell us where we're at. If we've got any inconsistencies, and so we just, we just have to have it.
We just gotta keep going after it. Okay, so what's my line?
Thank you.
Um, Lincoln, sanitary rate review.
No changes.
No changes, so that's good news there. Um, the, him went after the small city allotment grant, any word on that yet?
No, I don't think they made a decision.
So just clarify on that sidewalk will be on the south side of, um, Bay Street, right?
Yeah.
So that would cut further into the park and the lot, right?
No, so a little, a little bit of both, um, it's gonna integrate the current sidewalk and then go along the new red fence. And then it, it's not as wide as a regular sidewalk because of the fact that we approach a little in the street, a little in the park, but it'll be defined through that area and on down to the stairwell, so. But, and then we have a crosswalk, so people will just walk up Bay Street.
Oh my God, that's so bad.
And actually, you shut the cross and, you know, in a pedestrian area, it's very narrow.
On both sides, and they're like, well, what do I do?
You can't see. Yeah, that's great.
Once we get up to the top of the hill like across from the garden house, we can make it, whether it's grass there or in areas that can work, it's just through the paved area that's a little bit harsh to walk over. Some of the, get some engineering.
I hope they do that, that would be awesome.
That's awesome.
And we had a final accounting of our fiftieth anniversary, so what do we do with one thousand one hundred and eighty seven dollars ninety one cents?
We got a lunch.
Oh, ledger.
Let's go back in our.
Yeah, it just goes back in the journal.
Okay. Um, any closing public comments this week from you?
There is two, there's Judy and.
That's it, I'm sorry. Judy, any closing? She's taking that. Good, okay, let's go to council comments, I've got, uh, two things I'd like to be at with you. Um, our city recorder will have celebrated her one year anniversary on August twenty second.
Oh my gosh.
It's amazing.
How a year.
Very fast. So fast, so we need to do an executive session, uh, next, uh, September fifth. And for her review, and we'll do executive session for you two as well, Brady for, um, so Kim will get all of the paperwork out for doing this.
Certified by or something before writing?
Right, right, and, and then we'll do reviews at that time. Uh, reviews, and then we also need to do, um, an executive session to follow up on, um, a previous executive session, it'll just take about ten minutes to go over everything, so we need to do that probably in a week or so. Is there a time?
We can do that one simply by Zoom and it would only take just a few minutes to have an each other's discussion if, if that's what the council wishes, so be just when you're available.
Okay. So when do we want to do that, should do that?
Just after four.
Okay.
Are you back to school? Next week I start working in.
Oh, um, I don't know what's your availability.
For next year.
Judith doesn't tell me.
For this week, we can do it this week, we can do it maybe on Thursday?
Oh, I can do this.
Uh, I have rain kits, but I can send you.
Okay.
Thursday, it would have to be before three.
Before three? Two o'clock?
To get up to you.
Well, can you do it at two? I can't do this on Thursday.
I was gonna say, I don't think.
You can't do it Thursday?
No.
Yeah, I don't think that works.
Friday?
It'd have to be before four.
Before four?
Um, sure, and I'm just.
You're okay, you're okay?
I, uh, Thursday. Four o'clock.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, okay, Friday's good, yeah.
Before. Before four o'clock, three o'clock? You, did that work?
What's the date?
I think so.
I think so.
Friday the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Friday eighteen, okay.
So Friday.
And that's that executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what was it, what about September fifth, I heard that date.
Oh. That's for our review of, of employees.
Oh, okay.
That's our normal meeting.
Yeah.
But then we're gonna meet early, right?
Executive session. Yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, who else has council comments?
So you said Friday at?
Three o'clock.
Friday at three?
Yeah.
I don't, yes.
You have none?
I have.
Great, I just wanted to, um, two things, um, uh, dock licensing follow up. I really would like the information before we go into the work session about the grab pot storage. Do you know where his attorney is with that?
You just want the? No, I, I haven't followed up on that. Do you, what do you want me, what do you want from that information?
Well, I think we already passed a motion to, um, renew the leases at the rates.
Right, right.
That, to Newport was charging, or if you can't find contables for Newport, go to somewhere else that you can find contables.
But that was the only changes you wanted to make to him was that?
Well, I think that will give us, we need to know how, you know, the length of the docks, so we can figure out, is that a potential option for perhaps box storage or do we want, maybe we don't want leases to people that already have leases or partial. You know, there's, might give us options if we look at, you know, defining where the leases are, how much footage of dock space, all that stuff. Which I think we have from the old leases, unless somebody's added to the docks, which I don't know. I think they have, I think, like, the, um, new old dock is much bigger. Yeah.
So who's in charge of this project, this lease project?
Well, it was sent to the, the, the attorney way last time, I think Valerie looked into it, two thousand and six was the last time. We, they had authorized the attorney to redo the leases and it never was followed through on. So they haven't paid, all these people are using public docks without paying since two thousand and six.
And we're talking about three docks, right, like the new dock, the, the trade one, second and the bigger dock, if there's.
Those actually aren't public docks, are they? I mean, those are private docks on public property.
Correct, that's probably correct, yes.
But, okay.
Is, is it just those three though?
Well, there used to be the.
There are. Right. The Charles.
Right now. I love things, there are.
Charles.
Who owns there?
City, the city owns.
Yeah.
So nobody's doing business on all of the, well, two out of the three people actually are conducting their business off the docks that they own that are on public space. Um, nothing really happens with the bigger dock.
Yeah.
Coast Guard, I think was, uh, there was some kind of verbiage with the Coast Guard. Were they?
And I guess.
No, that's, yeah, I, I, that I do remember was the verbiage for the Coast Guard being recharged.
Right, so I will get him to finish on that so that we can get something out to you, um, he probably just did you drafts out for the September.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking at like, for example, one of them, it does say ninety five, so I'm looking at that, I want to make sure.
Yeah, somehow we are much longer than they used to be.
So they have the.
What's, when's that, uh, what session? Do we schedule?
On Thursday at three.
This or something?
No, I mean, I just think.
I got the one with.
That's not to September.
Yeah, that's September twelfth, right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the executive session is Thursday, I'm sorry.
At six.
And then it's Friday.
Friday.
Friday. And then my other thing, um, in reading the notes and reading, you know, um, and I can send out a memo, um, that it reflected that, um, city staff and myself and Lindsay was reflected in those, we're gonna meet with DQ about potential grants for watershed acquisition.
Yes.
And then, um, follow up with the work session. So I think we did need Brady, Kim, myself, with a woman from DQ who had, um, sent to write the grant for us to acquire watershed, and then also, um, a woman who works similarly on it from the Coalition of Oregon Land Trust, we'd also help. So I think it is, um, timely to have that discussion. So we were offered, there's a timber sale, all of depot bay, South Depot Bakery, unfortunately, it's not North Depot Bakery, which is our priority, but all that land is for sale.
Right.
Yeah, and they asked, um, us, we, the city, if we're interested, then after talking to the mayor, we would have to sign, they would buy it, but then we'd have to pay it back and we could potentially get rent money, but if we did, then we'd be, and really our priority should be North Creek, even though I'd love to get the whole depot bay watershed, um, but North Depot Bay Creek. So I think we would have this work session with, um, the DQ people and other ones that we should concentrate on North Creek. Um, so, um, maybe we do it in September when we're not so busy, uh, if everybody is, um, comfortable with having a work session.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, I wish the, um, North Depot Bay Creek.
Maybe like that last week of September, cause we don't have anything scheduled, we have something scheduled this rest of this week, could I?
Or we could do it October, whatever's comfortable, maybe we could schedule it next week, or do you want to schedule?
No, we don't have to, I just say, we don't have anything on.
Okay. Is it everything, that was for me?
I'm just wondering where those stickers came from, like on the.
Wall here.
With stickers.
Oh.
Yeah, Randy, where are those stickers coming from?
They came from the night out, they're just vinyl, they're not stickers, they're just, they're just vinyl.
They're not gonna. Crude, crude ball.
I know, they're, they're messy with Randy, but they're not supposed to stay in there.
They're wearing them.
Yeah.
They're supposed to go away. Yeah, they should go away.
It's, yeah, they are. Oh, it was during the night out, we're decorating that booth and they're just, they're not stickers, they're just like vinyl, um, adhesion. But, uh.
Uh, I've still been some research on bike, uh, bypass, um, and I thought we pulled a silly from ODOT and so I'll, I'll let you know, but I still kind of get some information.
Oh, thank you. Council, please.
Mary, I'm gonna take your advice, I'm gonna write my questions to, to the recorder, I'm concerned about our accounting. And, uh, I have, I've just got any questions?
Okay.
I have two things, um, there's been a lot of garbage in the harbor lately, um, a lot of fish practices floating around, I appreciate, you know, feeding the seals and all that, but hates against the law and be a big mess. We, somebody shot some videos, somebody feeding the seals, so, I heard. Um, and then, um, the tree permit, um, issue, like another big tree came down today, that tree's gone. That big tree on that lot.
Do they have a?
No, they do not have a permit, no, and.
Back in the chill.
No, this one is, uh, off. No, this one is uh off Derek, between Derek and.
A permit for what?
A tree that took, came down.
Do we require permits?
No, it's not, it's not that we require a tree permit, which I think we need to have some, a tree permit on, working on.
Policy, which Kim, I know is working on it.
That tree, they were told not to take that tree down until they had a building permit. You can't just go in and.
They have a predevelopment.
Who's in the permit? We did.
Our planner.
Okay.
Yes.
A year ago. So um can, what should we do? There's penalties, right? For violating ordinances. Uh, I would have to have our attorney weigh in on that. There are penalties, but I'm not sure about some of them.
Five hundred dollars a day, every day the violation continues.
Right, but you would say you can't put the tree back, so you.
No, but you could get a building permit. So five hundred dollars a day until you get a building permit.
They have to do predevelopment permit, predevelopment activity permit. So it's not a building permit, it's a predevelopment, which is what's up.
Right.
She called, um she called the property owner, said that somebody, her contractor had called the city and got permission and we're like, uh, no. But what we think happened, because Carly said somebody called her and asked if there was a permit, a tr- a tree permit program. And she said, no, they didn't say this was related to that property. So they got the answer they wanted because they asked a question that was designed.
To be there.
Yeah, yeah, to be there. And, you know.
It's like, it's the trees being cut down is the way you're getting out of control. It's so ugly.
Yes.
Um Ansley, Collins, Mitchell.
I mean, they even had a trade permit thing this whole past year, how many thousands of dollars you're spending.
We need to, we talked about this at all times.
Yeah.
Well, I think the Senate commission is working on the quality of life ordinance, and that would be.
That includes.
Includes. Well, I'm working on the trade ordinance, because it's intended what you want in the managers.
Yes.
Okay, you just, you already had protections in the zoning code, just not, starting up. What you're looking for is a different permit.
Yeah.
So um Lincoln City has one on all these places.
Need to get on, on that as soon as possible because.
But in the, in the meantime, I think we should enforce, so until that person gets a predevelopment or whatever is required, it's five, you know, it's opti- I think it's, the penalty is up, violation of ordinance is five hundred dollars a day.
And she knew.
I sent, I sent the planner that text she sent me a year ago. And she said, no, we have, we have, we can't do it.
We get our building.
Yeah, we, uh, she did, she found the email. And she sent it to him and said, or he sent it to her and she's like, thank you, I didn't come about that.
No, she, you know, she.
Forgot about it.
Yeah.
So I forgot.
Well, maybe a workshop would be in order, the tree ordinance.
We're gonna run.
We can, you know, debate the.
I would.
Finish.
Yeah, we should, we should look at a draft for.
I see, yeah.
Just a draft and presented to you. You want to second me in September?
Wow, thank you.
Him.
It's not close. I just, I, it's a.
We're done. She backed it down.
Yeah.
Uh, did she?
Oh my gosh. I thought it was gonna be a short meeting.